Touching every heart.
Touching every heart.
I worship you.
I worship you. I worship you.
So you are here, you are here. Moving in our midst. I worship you, God.
I worship you.
I worship you about everything this morning.
I worship you.
Say you the way maker, way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness.
My God, that is who you are.
You are the way maker.
Way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness, my God, that is who you are.
You are the way maker, way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness, my God, that is who you are. Do you believe that this morning? Way maker.
Way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness, my God, that is who you are.
Way maker.
Way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness, my God, that is who you are.
Come on, let's lift our voices and say way maker.
Way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness, my God, that is who you are.
Do you really believe that this morning? Let me hear you say way maker.
Way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness, my God, that is who you are.
Say you are here, you are here. Moving in this place. I worship you. I worship you, God.
I worship you.
Said you are here, you are here. Lending broken hearts. I worship you. Right here today.
I worship you.
Said you are here, you are here. Moving in our midst. I worship you.
I worship you.
You are here, you are here. Touching every heart. I worship you. I worship. Say you are here, you are here. Moving in this place. Hallelujah!
I worship you. I worship you.
You are the way maker.
Way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness, my God, that is who you are.
Say you are the way maker.
Way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness, my God, that is who you are.
Said I'm you are the way maker.
Way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness, my God.
And let's declare it this morning. Hallelujah, you're the way maker.
Way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness, my God, that is who you are.
You are the way maker.
Way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness, my God.
Let's just run and worship you in your own way. And let us give a little praise, way maker. Hallelujah! Oh, you're the way maker. You're the miracle working God. You are the pathfinder. Your way surpasses our understanding. When our paths was against the wall of God, you came and you made a way. You opened a red sea of difficulties, a red sea of circumstances. That's the God that we serve this morning. Hallelujah! Say way maker.
Way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness, my God, that is who you are.
You are the way maker.
Way maker, miracle worker, promise keeper, light in the darkness, my God, that is who you are.
Let's do it again. You are here. Moving in our midst. I worship you. I worship you. You are here.
You are here.
Moving in our midst. I worship you. I worship you. You are Alpha. And oh, we, God. We worship you, my Lord. You are worthy to be praised. Come on, let's declare it. You are Alpha and oh, we, God. You are.
And oh, we, God. We worship you, my Lord.
You are worthy.
You are worthy to be praised.
Said we give you all. We give you.
All that glory.
Said we worship you.
Worship you.
You, my Lord. You are worthy. Said we give you all.
All that glory.
We worship you.
Worship you.
We worship you. We worship you. We worship you. We worship you. We give you all. We give you.
All that glory.
Said we worship you. 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 Said we give you all. We give you.
All that glory. We worship you, my Lord. You are worthy to be praised.
We give you all. We give.
You are all that glory. We worship you, my Lord. You are worthy to be praised.
Said we give you all.
All that glory. We worship you, my Lord. You are worthy to be praised.
Just the voices now. You are Alpha. You are Alpha. And oh, we, God. We worship you, my Lord. You are worthy to be praised. You are Alpha.
You are Alpha. And oh, we, God. We worship you, my Lord. You are worthy to be praised.
We give you all.
We give you all. All that glory.
We worship you.
Worship you, my Lord.
You are worthy to be praised. We give you all.
We worship you, my Lord.
If you can open this gathering in a word of prayer this morning.
You are worthy to be praised.
Every hand bowed and every eye closed. My brother again, friend. Won't you come and open this gathering in a word of prayer this morning? And when you got a need this morning, you can just signify by raising your hand this morning. Amen. Blessed be his holy name. Amen. Dear God, our heavenly Father. Lord Jesus Christ, what a privilege once again this morning, Father God, to be found in your presence. Truly, Lord Jesus Christ, we want to deem it quite a privilege for us, my God and my Father, to be found in the house of the Lord. As David said, "I was happy when they said unto me, 'Let us go to the house of the Lord.'" My God and my Father, we are so happy this morning, Lord Jesus Christ, to be numbered among us, Father God, thine children. What manner of love the Father has bestowed upon us that we can be called the sons and daughters of God. Truly, Lord Jesus Christ, this has nothing to do with what we have done, but, Lord Jesus Christ, it is you, Father God, who took us and chose us and made us who we are this morning. Truly, Lord Jesus Christ, like yesterday, we were blessed, Father God, this morning. We came once again, Father Lord Jesus Christ, expecting something special this morning. Father God, we are so thankful, my God and my Father, for this privilege that you've given us, Lord Jesus Christ, to be in your presence this morning. We want to take that advantage, oh God. Father Lord Jesus Christ, each one of us, every brother, every sister, my God and my Father, we are so happy to know that you know every need, you know every desire. My God and my Father, we bring ourselves before thee. We pray this morning that, Lord, may you just have your own way with us. Help us, oh God, to forget about everything else, my God and my Father, and concentrate on thee and worship thee and praise thee this morning. Have thine own way with us, oh God, as we commit the singing of the songs of Zion. Father God, may our hearts be drawn closer. My God and my Father, we ask this blessing this morning. Have thine own way with us. In the mighty and powerful name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen. Wonderful. Amen. Can we do better than that? Let's give the Lord a wonderful and a praise this morning. I'm sure we can do better than that. Let's give the Lord a wonderful and a praise this morning. Let's give God a wave offering this morning. Let me say hallelujah. Praise the Lord. Glory to God. Turn around, shake your brothers hand. Put a smile on your face. Say, "God bless you, my brother. God bless you, my sister." It is good to be in the house of the Lord this morning. Amen. Amen. Oh, amen, hallelujah. Oh, amen. Amen. Oh, amen, hallelujah. Come on, let's lift up our voices. Amen. Amen.
Amen, hallelujah.
One more time. Amen. Amen. Hallelujah!
Amen. Oh, amen, hallelujah.
Let's do it again. Papa wagu. Mariwagu. N'akutanda, n'akutanda.
Amen, hallelujah.
Mariwagu. Papa wagu. N'akutanda, n'akutanda. Amen, hallelujah. Mariwagu. Mariwagu. Papa wagu. N'akutanda, n'akutanda. Can I hear you sing this one?
Amen.
Amen.
Amen, hallelujah.
Can I hear you sing over this side?
Amen. Oh, amen, hallelujah.
Can I hear you sing over this side?
Amen, hallelujah.
Can I hear you sing over this side? Amen. I can hear it's the glory everywhere on this side. Wonderful. Let me hear you sing one more time. Amen.
Amen, hallelujah.
Bless you to you. Amen. Amen.
Amen, hallelujah.
Papa wagu. N'akutanda, n'akutanda.
Amen, hallelujah.
Papa wagu.
Papa wagu.
N'akutanda, n'akutanda.
Amen, hallelujah.
Bless you. Bless you. Bless you, amen.
Amen, hallelujah.
Bless you, amen. Bless you, amen. Bless you, amen. Oh, amen, hallelujah. T'amu nyatisa. Hallelujah. Ha! T'amu nyatisa.
T'amu nyatisa. Hallelujah. Ana si bata sa.
T'amu nyatisa.
Hallelujah. Ana si bata sa.
Abadamus. Abadamus.
Ana si bata sa.
Abadamusana.
Ana si bata sa.
Abadamusana.
Hallelujah. Ana si bata sa. Ana si bata sa. Hallelujah. Ana si bata sa.
Abadamusana.
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 Hallelujah. Ana si bata sa.
T'amu nyatisa. T'amu nyatisa. T'amu nyatisa. T'amu nyatisa. Can I sing it together? Atenbe. Atenbe, hallelujah. Atenbe. 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 Atenbe, hallelujah.
Ana si bata sa.
T'amu nyatisa. T'amu nyatisa. T'amu nyatisa.
Ana si bata sa.
T'amu nyatisa. T'amu nyatisa. Atenbe, hallelujah.
Hallelujah. Ana si bata sa.
O Jesu Jesa city, amen. O Jesu Jesa city.
Amen.
O Jesu Jesa city. A little bit fast. O Jesu Jesa city, amen. O Jesu Jesa city, amen. O Jesu Jesa city.
Oh, amen.
O Jesu Jesa city.
Oh, amen.
O Jesu Jesa city.
Oh, amen.
O Jesu Jesa city.
Oh, amen.
O Jesu Jesa city.
Oh, amen.
O Jesu Jesa city.
Oh, amen.
Sisobona si cha. Bonasi ti.
Amen.
Sisobona si cha. Bonasi ti.
Amen.
Sisobona si cha. Bonasi ti.
Amen.
Sisobona si cha.
Oh, amen.
O Jesu Jesa city.
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 Amen.
O Jesu Jesa city. Let's see the way, the hands. Shout! Hallelujah! All the way from the United Kingdom, we've got a Briton amongst, or by the events. Let's put our hands together for him. He's gonna come and sing us a few songs. Amen, God bless you. I'm in a happy this morning. I have a maker. He for my heart. Let's just worship him this morning. Oh, before he return. My love, my life. Was he. Oh, raise your hands. I have a maker.
I have a maker.
He for my heart.
He for my heart.
Before he return.
Before.
He wait time.
He there.
My love.
Was he.
Oh, somebody's saying, "He knows my name." Oh, he knows.
He knows my name.
He knows.
He knows my every thought.
His turn.
He sees each deal that falls.
When he hears me when I call. He knows my name.
He knows my name.
Yes, he knows.
He knows my every thought.
His turn. Yes, oh God. Hallelujah! Raise your hands. Sing and worship him now.
For.
When he hears me when I call. How many say, "I have a father." Oh.
I have a father.
He calls me his own.
He calls his own.
He never leaves me. He never leaves. No matter where.
No matter where.
Oh, everybody sing it. He knows my name. I know.
He knows my name.
He knows.
He knows my name.
His own. His turn. Oh, God. Hallelujah! Hallelujah! Worship him, somebody.
He hears me when I call.
I'm glad he knows my name. He knows my name.
He knows my name.
He knows my name.
He knows my every thought.
His turn.
He sees each deal that falls.
When he hears me when I call. Worship him this morning. Worship him this morning. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Amen. He's so sweet to trust in Jesus. Amen. Jesus. Jesus. How I trust him. How I prove him. Oh, Jesus. Oh, Jesus. Jesus. Precious Jesus. Oh, for grace to trust. Oh, Jesus.
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 How I trust him.
How I prove him.
He knows.
Jesus.
Jesus.
Oh, my Jesus.
Precious Jesus.
Oh, for grace.
Oh, for grace to trust him.
He's so sweet.
He's so sweet to trust.
He's a dependable God. Oh, just to. Take him. Oh, just to.
Just to.
He's a failing word of promise. Oh, just to know.
Just to know.
Oh, that's it. Raise your hands to him. Jesus. Jesus.
How I trust him. How I prove him.
Oh, Jesus.
Jesus.
Oh, my Jesus.
Precious Jesus.
Oh, for grace to trust. Oh, how sweet to trust in him.
Oh, how sweet to trust.
Oh, just to bless. He's cleansing blood.
Just to trust.
His grace. Just a simple fight to bless him this morning.
Just.
Simple. Perfectly. Beneath the healing.
He's the.
The cleansing. Oh, Jesus.
Jesus.
Hallelujah!
How I trust him.
Hallelujah! Hallelujah! To know. Oh, Jesus. Jesus, Jesus. Hallelujah, hallelujah! We magnify your name, oh! Oh, for grace to trust. Somebody worship him this morning. Somebody worship him this morning. Jesus, how I trust him. How I prove him more and more. Jesus, Jesus. Precious Jesus. Oh, for grace to trust him more. And they count time not by years. For there is no. And they count, and they count. Time not by a fretless day. Oh, there is no. God shall wash away all tears. Oh, there is no pain, no. No pain, no. And they count. Time not by years. For there is no. And they count, and they count. Time not by years. For there is no. There is a day. In the end. Of fretless days. Of fretless days. Lies a city. Lies a city. It shall never pass away. It shall never pass. And there is no life. For there is no. Oh, God shall wash. Hallelujah! God shall wash away all tears. There is no death. No pain, no fear. And they count. Oh, hallelujah! Raise your hands to him this morning. Let's constrain the Holy Ghost this morning. Snow. Oh, and they count. And they count. And not by years. Oh, there is no. All the gates, all the gates. Oh, pale and made in the city, in the city. Oh, all the streets with golden light. All the streets with golden light. Oh, and there is no. Everybody say, God shall wash away all tears. There is no pain, no more sorrow. And they count. Oh, hallelujah! Oh, hallelujah! Oh, there is no. And they count. Time not by years. Oh, there is no. God shall wash. Away all tears. Oh, there is no pain, no. And they count. And they count. Time not by years. For there is no. Life there. There is a precious hiding place in Jesus' side. Oh, in Jesus' side. Oh, there is a cliff of heavenly grace. Oh, in Jesus' side. Oh, oh, there is a shelter from all sin. Oh, from all doubt. Yeah, worship him this morning, worship him, somebody! All the way, amen! Precious place. Hallelujah! This precious place, this precious place. Was bought for me by Jesus' blood. Shee, he died for me. Oh, can for me. Set me free. Everybody sing. The shelter from all sin. From all doubt, from all fear. Oh, the world meant to me. Precious place. Oh, when I get, when I get to. To that hiding place. My weary soul. Shall find. And I will joy. And I will joy. That heavenly place. By Jesus' side. Hallelujah, hallelujah! There is a shelter. The shelter from all sin. Oh, hallelujah! From all doubt. From all fear. All the way. Oh, amen. Precious place. Oh, when I get to. When I get to. That hiding place. Oh, my weary soul. Shall find. And I will joy. And I will joy. That heavenly place. Jesus' side. By Jesus' side. There is a shelter. The shelter from all sin. From all doubt. Hallelujah! All the way. Meant to me. Precious place. In Jesus' side. There is a shelter. The shelter from all sin. From all doubt. From all doubt. All the way. Oh, precious place. In Jesus' side. There is a rest that I must run. There are victories to me. Oh, give me power every hour. Oh, there is a rest. There is a rest. Oh, there are victories. Pastor Maherid. Oh, give me power every. Oh, say, keep me true. Keep me true, Lord Jesus. Keep me true, keep me true. Keep me true, Lord Jesus. Oh, there is a rest. There are victories. Give me power, give me power every. Oh, this mountain, this mountain shall be removed. Oh, this mountain shall be removed. Oh, this mountain shall be removed. Oh, but by my spirit says. Oh, not by mind, oh, not by mind. Oh, not by power. But by my spirit says. Oh, not by mind, not by mind. Not by power, not by power. Oh, but by my spirit says. This mountain. This mountain. Shall be removed. This mountain. This mountain shall be removed. This mountain. This mountain. Shall be, but by my spirit, but by my spirit says. Your mountain, your mountain, your mountain, your mountain. Oh, shall be removed. Your mountain, your mountain shall be removed. Your mountain shall be removed. Spirit says, hallelujah!
Let's pray for the tithes and offerings. Gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we are in great joy this morning, Father Lord, to be in your presence, Father. And we are gathered, Lord, in the precious name of our Lord Jesus Christ, who is our God, our King, our everlasting Father. Lord, we giving praises and honor to thee, Father, to thank you, Lord, for what you are doing for us, Lord. You have blessed us abundantly, Father, in all ways, my God. We appreciate that this morning, Father Lord. As we lift up your name, for your name is above all names, Lord God Almighty. You cannot be equalled to anyone, Father. You stand alone, you are great, you are God, you are holy, Lord Jesus Christ. Thank you, Father, for this blessed morning, Father Lord. We appreciate you, Lord, with all our hearts, Father. We have come to your house, Lord, with tithes and offerings this morning, Father Lord. As an obedience, Father, to your word, Lord. Father, may you bless every heart this morning, spiritually, Lord, and also, Father, with material things, Father. Whether it be financial or whatever need thy children have, Lord, may you bless them abundantly, Father Lord. We thank you, Lord Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Amen. When he reached down his hand for me. When he reached down his hand for me. Oh, I was lost, head undone, without God. He said, oh, when he reached. Down his hand for me. When he reached, he reached down his hand for me. I know about it. When he reached down his hand for me. I was lost, I was lost, head undone, without God. He said, when he reached down his hand for me. I want to sing these prayers for Pastor Maherid, verse two. Oh, I was near, ringed despair. When he came to me and he showed it. He showed me that I could be free. That he lifted, that he lifted. Oh, gave me, gave me glory, oh, recalled me. Oh, when he reached, he reached down his hand for me. Oh, raise your hands, say, when he reached. When he reached. When he reached down his hand, his hand for me. When he reached, when he reached, oh, down his hand for me. I was lost. I was lost, head undone. When he reached down his hand for me.
Precious heavenly Father, almighty God, we were lost and undone. We were sinking deep in the muddy clay, but you came down the portals of glory. You left the palace and the corridors of heaven, and you came down for such whims as we are. Your grace, Father, is what we sing about every Sunday. Your grace has kept us thus far, and your grace will see us through. Dear Father, we are products of every trial and temptation. But Lord, through them all, we have been made stronger. Through them all, we have been made victorious. We have been made a better people, a better candidates of heaven. We are gathered here, Lord, unto thy holy name, because you reached down your hand for us. When hell was calling for our lives and sin demanded justice, mercy came down and said, no! I'm not going to let these ones go, and I'm not gonna let them slip away. The grip of the master's hand caught a hold of our souls and brought us back to the fold. We stand in your presence because of your grace and mercy. Bless us this morning, speak to us this morning, rebuke us this morning, realign us this morning. Your will is what we want in our lives. Let the will of heaven be made known even here on earth. We pray as we commit the service ahead of us. Hide the preacher behind the shadow of the cross. Make him narrow in the wisdom of men, and let Christ and Jesus Christ alone be made manifest in our midst this morning. That's our prayer, in Jesus' name, amen and amen. Amen, you may be seated. Praise the Lord. My, what a wonderful song service we've heard. Amen, let's put our hands together for, for the brothers who participated, amen. It's good to be back again in the house of God. It's good to see every one of you on a Sunday morning, amen. And we want to greet all our visitors and tell them that they're welcome.